All right. Good morning, everyone. It's seven o'clock on April tenth, two thousand twenty-four, and we'll call the meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to hold the order. We'll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. First item of discussion this morning, the Natural Resource Advisory Committee is here, and so we will welcome them to have a conversation about no mo may and some other things. So we'll have Gene Bowman welcome them. Good morning, Gene.
Good morning. The staff liaison to this commission is Guy Taylor, who's on vacation today. So I'm filling in for him, and really, I'm just going to introduce the Natural Resource Advisory Committee. It's one of our thirteen boards and commissions, and I'm going to introduce their chair, Cedar Walters, who's going to tell us a little bit about what their priorities are, and then we'll close with Jake talking about the no mo may request. Cedar.
Thanks, Gene. Well, good morning, Mayor, council members. So we just wanted an opportunity to kind of introduce other members of this committee that you may not have met before, and really actually invite you to engage with us on topics that relate to conservation or natural resources in the city of Fergus Falls. So we're just a group of people serving on this committee, and we all just share an interest in conservation and sustainability and protecting natural resources. My personal kind of expertise that I bring to the committee is in recycling and composting and solid waste issues. I was with the solid waste department with the county for about five years, so I bring that to the committee. And a couple of things that we are working on is reviewing some locations for potential municipal solar projects to save money and increase energy efficiency. So we're looking at reviewing some of those sites. I know we brought some of that information forward last month. We also, as a committee, review the native planting plans that residents submit, just to make sure that they are planting appropriate native species in their yards. They have a plan and indicate and commit to that that plan in their yard being maintained. Another thing that has been a part of the committee is working with Gene to get out relevant information on native plantings or recycling or waste reduction and other related topics to the public, to the residents, through either social media or some of the utility inserts. So it's been great to work with her on some of those. And one thing we've been working on this spring specifically is working with windflower natives to put on a native planting workshop at the Fergus Falls Public Library on April twenty-fifth as a part of Earth Day programming. And that's just an effort to further educate residents on if you're going to plant natives in your yard, we want you to be using best practices. We don't want it to be an eyesore. We want you to do it well and have that information available to residents, and also talk them through how to use that native planting plan that is on the city website so that they're just doing things correctly. One member who is not here today, otherwise everybody will get a chance to just come up and you can meet them, is Chris Burns. He's an Otter Tail Power employee, and so he's on the committee with us as well. But I just want to invite up Beth Monkey, who is one of our committee members. Thank you.
Thanks, Cedar.
Good morning. I'm Beth Monkey, and I'm on the committee mainly because I am involved with a climate action group in town, and we do a lot of outreach to the community and education on environmental issues. One of the things that we're working on is this Earth Day project that you have in front of you. So it's nice to be on a committee and be able to work on these issues with the city council as well. So I was just going to highlight some Earth Day things so you're aware of some of the things that we're doing, and we have on our Earth Day committee representatives from the Prairie, from the Friends of the Library, from the Friends of the Prairie. So and Cedar is on the committee, so there is just a wide variety of representation on the committee that's doing these activities. We have a big day on the twenty-seventh with a lot of family-friendly activities at the Prairie. We have, we're going to have a face painter and food trucks and nature hikes with families and an artist who's going to help people do paintings of watercolors of the Prairie. Lori Moxis from Otter Tail Power is going to be talking about how you can access all the monies that are available right now to do things like heat pumps and heat pump dryers, and there are just so many incentives right now to make transitions to cleaner energy and save money while you upgrade your home and everything. So we have somebody from the MPCA coming to talk about our waters and particularly lead in the water. We also are connecting with an organization called Beyond Plastics, which is a national organization of speakers that talk about plastics and, you know, how that's impacting our environment without ourselves, but also within ourselves, too. And then we have Molly Stoddard and Jacob MacArthur doing a walk, talking about the book Braiding Sweetgrass, which I guess I haven't read it, but it's a good book. We have an EV car show. And then some other activities that week, we have a trash dash, so we're getting a bunch of groups to go pick up trash in the neighborhoods. And on this poster, there's a QR code. If you scan that, it will take you to a lot more information about the trash dash, but we already have many groups. I know Morning Rotary has already signed up to be part of it, the ALC, Hillcrest. There are just a bunch of groups that are already hopping on board with that trash pickup. We have Douglas Wood, who's a children's author, and then, like Cedar said, the native plantings. And then in May, this is kind of an extended Earth Day thing. We have Paul Douglas, the retired WCCO meteorologist, is coming to talk about climate and its impact on our communities. So just wanted you to be aware so you can help promote some of these great activities that we have going on. Thank you.
Thanks, Beth, and just for people watching at home. So that's Saturday, April twenty-seventh.
Yes.
To celebrate Earth Day, which is Monday, April twenty-second.
So then these are all, they all take place at the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center, correct? Yes. The Douglas Wood is the twenty-second at the library. He's also going to be at the schools. The Native Prairie is at the library on the twenty-fifth. Paul Douglas is at the college on the eighteenth.
Thanks, Beth.
So I'm Cody Duck. Just, I'll keep my my side brief, but I've been, I work for the West Otter Tail Soil and Water Conservation District here in town. So just a little bit of that where I work and then my background. I've missed my previous job, and everything's all been conservation-based, natural resource-based, with invasive species management, native plantings, native grass mix, seedings, anything like that. So if you ever get questions about that, you know, type of thing from people, too, that that's something we we would help with for for management purposes. So.
Thanks, Cody.
Hi, my name's Jake Nelson, and I, too, work for the Soil and Water Conservation District here in West Otter Tail. I'm also the president of the Pheasants Forever chapter here in town, so I'm very involved in the conservation world, you could say. And it's, I guess, my, I'm the lucky person that gets to ask for no mo may. So basically, we're requesting that we waive the six-inch height requirement on native or on grass lawns here in town through the month of May. And no mo may would last, obviously, through the month of May. The benefits are that it allows native bees, butterflies, pollinators, a chance to emerge in the spring, allow them a chance to feed on some sort of, you know, dandelions or clover, things that are early emergers that would normally be mowed right away. It reduces greenhouse gases by mowing less. It reduces water usage, and it also, you know, would reduce fertilizer use and things like that. There are some cons to it. One of them is being that it doesn't go far enough for pollinators, and that's one of the main arguments against it. But to that, we say, that's your chance to plant a native planting in your yard or look at something like that. So thank you.
Thanks, Jake.
Any questions on that, or?
I guess in the past, Guy has been in support of this. I don't know. I don't want to speak for him. Is he, is he, is Guy in favor of doing the same thing as we've done the past several years? Does anyone?
Yes.
And I think at our, at our meeting discussions, it would be more or less allowing it, not necessarily promoting it, but allowing it to happen. So.
Okay. And so the council is, yeah, the council could consider that at their Monday meeting if they'd like.
I just got one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
And Guy's not here to answer it, but, you know, I think last year we talked about that no mo may went into almost June, too, with some of the people. They didn't mow it, and, you know, we don't want to be punishing people for it, but, I mean, it's just like, we just want to make sure that the May is, month of May is done in within a week or something. I think it went past. We talked about it last night. I wish Guy was here to ask that question. Maybe we'll talk about it Monday night.
Yeah. I think typically, most people have a June first, you know, needs to come into require or back into the requirement. So if it takes a week to get there, you should.
I understand that, but I think it would drug into it. I just wanted to ask, and maybe.
Yeah. Your Honor, Councilmember Rachel, in the memo that Guy provided, kind of the last sentence there, it says, "All lawns need to comply to the height max by or on June first."
Yeah, I should have read that, but.
You know, that would be the expectation is that they make that plan ahead of time, and they're in compliance on June first or before.
And then there's a weekend. So like, June first is Saturday, Sunday, so hopefully by the third, Monday, the third.
Yeah, when we're all looking.
Yeah.
Someone like to make a motion, we bring this to the council for discussion.
I can wait, there, you're on.
Thanks, Anthony. Thanks, Brent. Any further questions for Jake and members of the Natural Resource Advisory Committee? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. Thank you, Natural Resource Advisory Committee, for all you do.
Yeah. Thanks for having us.
Yeah. Have a great day.
You, too.
Next up is a discussion of a special meeting notice related to the TIF at the property of eight oh one West Stanton Avenue. We'll call on our community development manager, Clara Beck. Good morning, Clara.
Good morning, everybody. This is kind of a mishmash of things, but what my ultimate goal this morning is to do is to tie together some disparate parts of a project that we've talked about in standalone aspects and put them together into one initiative so that when we move into our next meetings coming up on the fifteenth, and then hopefully a special session on the twenty-fourth or thereabouts, you have an idea of where we're going with this project. So in your memo, I laid out some of the findings that we've had in studies in the past regarding workforce housing needs. We have an opportunity right now, as you're aware, to acquire eight oh one West Stanton Avenue. We have a grant to help us cover that cost and get that cleaned up. And then the ultimate goal would be to turn that site into workforce housing. We have received a letter of intent from a developer who is well-known in the outside the metro area, so he's located in Walker, Minnesota. And he has done the most number of workforce housing projects in the entire state, so he has quite a portfolio behind him. I think we've introduced him to you before in a closed session, but he has officially submitted a letter of intent. We wouldn't act on that, probably for another couple of meetings. This is just to let you know that that's out there, that he is interested in acquiring eight oh one West Stanton after the city has acquired it. So we still need to go through our purchase agreement process and the loan agreement process with Mark Christopherson to purchase that property, eight oh one. And then upon that purchase, we could have the discussion about the LOI with the developer. But I just wanted to tee up some of our conversations that we're going to be having about workforce and about the request for TIF that you're going to be seeing on Monday. We are going to be holding a public hearing on that. You'll get your memo about the the length of the TIF and the financial analysis on Thursday with your packet materials. But we are looking at likely a full TIF district of twenty-six years. It's possible that we could shave off a few of those years, but that's really what the market is dictating right now, and you'll learn a little bit more about that on Thursday in your packet. And then on Monday, we'll have a chance to discuss it. But I wanted to put all of this out there so you can kind of see where we're going with the project. Our ultimate goal is we're going to get about sixty units of workforce housing. Our plan back in two thousand twenty-one told us that we needed between fifty-five and sixty-five, so we're hitting that sweet spot. We initially, the project was looking at about fifty-eight units, but with efficiency, they added sixty, or they added two more to get us to that sixty. So it's a, I think it's a really good project. It's going to be good for Fergus Falls, and I'm looking forward to the TIF discussion, and I'm here for any questions that you might have before we start moving into those discussions. And then also to talk a little bit about our special session and what time of day works best for you. So the goal is to give you enough time to look at and look at the TIF information and then take in any public comment, any of your own comments, before you make your decision on that. So what we're going to do is we're, and this also allows us to get the purchase agreement taken care of on the fifteenth, because we don't want to go into a TIF agreement on something that we don't have an agreement in place to actually purchase. That doesn't make a lot of sense in, you know, the scheme of things. So we're going to have the public hearing on the fifteenth for the ten, for the TIF, but then you're not going to actually take action until a later meeting. And the meeting that we're hoping for right now was noon on the twenty-fourth, but I'm hearing that noon might not be the right time. So I'm wondering if there's a better time on the twenty-fourth for a special session to discuss the TIF.
Can we just do it right, we have a committee to hold, you don't have that week morning?
No.
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 Should we just do it at the morning meeting then? It just makes it easier for.
Now? Seven AM.
Any preference, Brent? Seven AM?
A little later, because I already got to take time off for the next day for the Board of Equalization.
Right.
As my phone interrupted, my schedule changes quickly, so sorry about that. No problem. No problem. Is, this is a meeting of the council, right?
Yes.
Public obviously will be invited, but the intention is not to, so seven AM, if that works for everyone, is that okay?
And we do the the normal notice, you know, getting the information out there in plenty of time.
Of course, they're invited, but the intention is not, the intention is for the council to discuss that, right? We'll have a public hearing on.
On the fifteenth.
City council meeting on public, on the fifteenth. Seven AM work for you, Jim? Yeah, Laura?
That's the best for me. Yep.
Seven AM?
The Otter Tail County Workforce Summit is that same day. What is the time of that meeting? I don't remember if that's a morning or an afternoon or both or all day or what it is.
It started at nine?
Yeah, it was the social hour at eight thirty, and then sessions at nine, I want to say off the top of my head. So this actually afford the ability to do the meeting and get over there if somebody wished to attend.
And we do, from the city side of things, we do have Mike Hartwell going to the Workforce Housing Summit, so, and he won't be at the earlier meeting.
Right. Works for me. An earlier time, especially to allow for that, I think, would be great.
Great.
Let's not go any earlier than seven.
No, that's great.
All right.
Yeah, I won't be here. Does anybody, yeah, any questions or anything that was in the memo that you're interested to learn more about?
Everybody understand the timeline and, and we'll have the.
April twenty-fourth?
April twenty-fourth, seven AM.
And then we'll have a official meeting, seven AM on the twenty-fourth to take action. Is that, that's the intention, right?
You know, just, just for the record, to, you know, if somebody could ask why we don't wait till May sixth, the developer is working on a workforce housing application, which is driving the timeline, and that's due by the end of.
April. Yeah, April thirtieth.
So that's why we have to have the special meeting.
Yeah. And the TIF act, the TIF acts as the local match. So the breakdown right now is, and this is just from very preliminary numbers that I've seen from Baker Tilly, but I believe it's thirty-nine percent of the project could come through this workforce housing grant. And then ten percent of that, ten percent of the project would be TIF financing and then bank and equity from the developer to make up the rest of it. So the way that the workforce housing project or program works is you have to have local contribution, and that is generally tax increment financing. And right now, the state is looking at that number that's awarded through TIF, and then they will double that in their grant toward the developer. So it's a, it's a really good project. They've got a lot of money in that pot right now. They are not going to be doing another round next year, so time kind of is of the essence to try to get this project to go right now. They've got thirty-nine million in that, in that pot currently, so I think we have a fairly good shot at at getting a good project.
Well, thanks for your work on this, Clara. I know these projects are always complicated. There's a lot of moving pieces, especially with the acquisition of the land and the grant that went with it. So we look forward to a good conversation on the fifteenth and then again on the twenty-fourth. So I guess we'd look for a motion to bring to the council just to set that meeting at seven AM on the twenty-fourth as well as.
Make that motion.
You see that, and then also that same motion, Scott, authorize the city to enter in the purchase agreement.
Absolutely.
And then to approve the negotiation of a loan agreement with the current properties of eight oh one.
Yep.
We'll have, bring that up for consideration on Monday night. Everyone go with that? Someone second that motion?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Anthony. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. Thanks, Clara. Next, we'll call on our city administrator, Andrew Bremseth, with the two thousand twenty-four million overlay improvement project. Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, your honor, members. Brian was not able to be here today, so I'll take the next handful of items, and then he will be present on Monday. So if there is a question that I'm not able to answer this morning, I would encourage us to move the conversation to Monday, and he'll be able to answer those questions for you. Kind of turning the page a little bit, and a sure sign of spring is talking about street projects. So city staff has substantially completed the plans and specs for our annual mill and overlay project. I'll direct your attention to the screen here. These are the street candidates that we've identified for the two thousand twenty-four mill and overlay project. They are Sherman Street from Douglas Avenue to Channing Avenue, Sheridan Street from Adolphus to Channing, Maybell from Adolphus to Channing, and then Adolphus from Sheridan to Maybell. And then we also, that little segment in white there is going to be an alternate bid, and that is on Channing Avenue from Sherman to Sheridan. So certainly some major needs in that area. So if anybody's driven those streets, I just did last night in advance of this, and a couple of those segments are real good candidates. Brian has estimated that the probable construction cost for the base bid is two hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred. The alternate section there in white, to be fifty-eight thousand five hundred, and because of those estimates, we do have to follow a public bidding process. So that's the, that's why we're requesting the ability to advertise for bids and accept the plans and specs. We do not have a scheduled bid opening, but Brian anticipates that will happen in early May. And with favorable bids, if that happens, we will likely come back to the council to expand the project and add additional candidates to the list. This work is scheduled to be completed by fall, so this will be, you know, a summer project, and our budget for the year is three hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred dollars in our two thousand twenty-four levy. That Brian indicates that includes engineering and contingency cost, and we may be requesting to carry additional funds over from last year, depending on where pricing comes in and then the ability to add additional candidates as well. So the request again before you this morning is to accept the plans and specs for those streets and to give the engineering department the ability to go out for bids and and work through that process. Those bids, of course, once opened, will come back to the council for approval.
Thank you, Andrew. And we can bring this to the council through a motion? Brad, thank you. Thanks, Jim. Questions for our assistant city engineer?
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. Got a nice ring to it.
Well, you all might demote me after the next item, so we'll see.
All right. Next item, downtown riverfront phase two site improvements.
All right. Thank you, your honor, members. This was talked about last fall, and I will just say that I was not at that meeting. I believe it was right at the time my daughter was born, so I wasn't privy to the conversation, but I do know that there was some requests made to bring additional information back about the overall budget in relation to this topic. So I will say this. The, there's three options kind of before you. The first being the decorative steel fence, which is on the screen now, that matches the fence that is on the parking lot side of this project, as well as the phase one fence. The second option, and let me just say, that's seventy thousand four hundred and twenty-five. That's the pricing that we got from Comstock. The second option is a wooden cedar split rail fence, as you can see here. That's similar to the fence that's around the rain garden here in City Hall Park. That was just shy of twenty-three thousand dollars to use that option. And then the third option, as Brian presents here, is to monitor use and decide at a later date. To, to address why the fence is not already part of the project, there was a bid alternate when we bid this out, which was bid alternate number two, which would have continued the riverfront trail downwards a little ways into the grass. And as part of that, there was a fence mounted on the trail, on the south side of that trail, which would have had that physical separation from the splash pad to the riverfront. That alternate was not awarded ultimately because of where bids came in. Bids came in higher than anticipated. We were in the, in cut mode. We, that's when the fundraising campaign was launched to try to make all this come together and work. Since that time, we've heard from a number of people that feel like that's a very important component to this project, specifically the senior center. When we met with the senior center to talk more about this project, they had two major concerns. One of them was a fence between the splash pad and the parking lot, which we were pleased to be able to tell them was included in the project. The other one was a fence between the, on the riverfront, between the splash pad and the river. And, you know, I just reflect on some of those conversations and the wisdom that, that people that have kind of seen it all share when it comes to what needs to happen to protect our kids. So I guess the reality is that this truly is a public safety issue. Watching a lot of the construction happen out my office window, you realize that this riverbank is much steeper than I think anybody ever anticipated. It was quite the chore to watch them even cut trees down with with equipment. And the thought of kids running kind of, you know, with nothing to stop them out of the splash pad down this steep hill and riverbank, I think, is something we really need to think long and hard about. And, and I would recommend strongly that we go with option number one, because it does provide adequate safety protection. I think option two, you know, it would slow somebody down, but it's not going to stop somebody. And, and I don't want to wait and do nothing and see a tragedy happen, because, yes, it could be real bad. So anyway, I think the conversation you guys had last time centered around the budget, and we're projecting right now at this stage of the game, which is real close to the end of the project, substantial, our final completion is the end of next month. And we're looking at about two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars remaining in the construction contingency. I think we wanted to get a good idea as to what our contingency budget looked like before making this decision. We started with a ten percent construction contingency, which was three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. We've spent about a hundred and forty thousand, using round numbers, of that contingency. So we've used about thirty-nine to forty percent of the contingency. So we still have a healthy contingency. Like I said, that leaves just over two hundred and nineteen thousand, which could cover the cost of this fence and then other unforeseen construction items. But again, at this stage, it's very unlikely that there's anything that's unforeseen or that's going to pop up. So ultimately, it's up to the council to decide how they want to do this. There's a map in the packet showing the location of that fence. It would come from where the trail connection stops, right there. So where the trail connection stops, all the way along the riverfront, and then connect back up into the corner there on the other side of the restroom buildings to the parking lot. So it really kind of barricades the entire project area. So that's the, that's the conversation before you, and looking for the direction the council wants to go.
Thanks, Andrew. Is there any discussion? Yeah. Questions? Yep. Just, so Andrew, what I'm hearing is really there's no requirement that a fence has to be there.
Yes.
Of course, we're all safety binded, which I think we need to be. Has there been any debate or talk of basically splitting this difference? Let's say the city says, yeah, we'll, we'll do a fence, but we would do what the cost of a split rail fence would be. And those who are asking for donations or the group who's doing that, maybe they could pay for the rest of it that would bring it up to that steel, that metal fence. You know, so I think, what is it, about maybe fifty thousand dollar difference there?
Yeah, the conversation hasn't, hasn't happened, mostly because there's still a gap in fundraising that needs to happen. Add another fifty thousand to that, you know, I don't know that I could stand here and say that that would even, that the money would come in.
Right. I, I just, you know, maybe somebody's pretty passionate about that, you know, if it's, you know, safety issues and things, I might jar a wallet opening. I don't know. And at least the city could still put forth some money.
And uh at least uh the city could still put forth some uh money towards that. But as far as the whole amount, since the budget issues came up earlier, um just something to think about.
Thanks, y'all.
Yeah, and I will just, your honor, I failed to mention, you're exactly right, Al. There's nothing from a code perspective that requires anything to happen. That's, that's completely correct.
So give those numbers on the contingency, it's two hundred, what was the?
Yeah, we have, remaining in the contingency is just north of two hundred and nineteen thousand. This would be, if we, if we did the decorative fence, it's seventy thousand four hundred and twenty-five.
So we'd still have a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, exactly.
And e- and with substantial completion to take place in May, is there a flurry of activity at the end that could eat up this contingency, does con, does um?
Um, you know, not likely. Bolton made their memo um that was included in the packet, kind of, you know, they feel like we have the ability with the remaining contingency to cover the fence and anything else that may pop up. So there's, they don't have a lot of concern about running of the contingency, that two hundred and nineteen thousand.
Yeah, it seemed to me to, uh last thing for me, but if there's anything in a contingency, if it's a safety concern, I mean, that would certainly, you know, obviously, we probably should have caught that at the beginning and made it not an alternate. We didn't, it's here we are now. If we, if we do see it as a safety concern, I don't know how you'd argue that there's a better use for contingency funds that are available. But um I guess we, Jim?
I think that if, if there's money available, it's a safety issue. I think we should go with option one. I mean, there's no, no doubt in my mind, we're, we're talking about young kids and a split rail fence is not going to stop any kid from going on through if they're running at full speed. I, I firmly believe we should go with option one. We have the contingency money there, go ahead and do it.
Is that a motion to the?
That's a motion.
To the council for that consideration? Thanks, Jim. Someone like to make a second?
I'll second.
Scott, Brent?
Yeah, and I'm gonna have to go if Jim leaned on that. I mean, number one, it matches the one on the other side. Number two, the kids are not gonna be able to get over it. My wife ran a daycare, we had a split rail in the front yard, didn't stop them, especially when they're gonna be possibly going at a high rate of speed down the hill. Plus, number two, I would assume the maintenance down the long run, split rail fences don't last forever. They will start to rot, they will start to fall apart, you know, and there's gonna be, as far as I'm concerned, I think the maintenance down the road is gonna be a lot less on a steel.
Thank you, Brent.
As well, my, my only thing would be, like, how, you say there's still a gap on the fundraising. You know, is that not gonna eat into the contingency? So the two hundred and nineteen thousand contingency is, is what? If you see what I mean?
So a little fundraising update for you. Your goal for that group was two million dollars. And to date, we have physically collected one point four million dollars over that, so one million four hundred and fifteen thousand. We have expectations of people that have said they're going to give of another three hundred and seventy-nine thousand five hundred. So that brings that up to one million seven ninety-four. So there is still a gap as of today of two hundred and five thousand. We just met with the fundraisers again yesterday and um there is still expectation of people that aren't on the list yet to give some larger donations too. Of course, we don't know that as of today, but um that's where we're at. So right now, the gap is two oh five as of today. But they're continuing to work on that and um see where it comes in. If there's ultimately a gap at the end of this, I'll be back talking to you about how we'll bridge that gap, of course. But as of today, they still have the goal of getting that last two oh five, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Your honor.
Yes.
Would it be just uh to wait, hold it off until the May sixth meeting to see if somebody wants to step up to the plate? I mean, is that gonna make a difference? Andrew, maybe you could answer that question?
Well, I mean, ultimately, that would be fine. The, it wouldn't probably be in place by May thirtieth or May thirty-first. We are, I'll let the cat out of the bag, I guess. We're, we're planning for a grand opening celebration on May thirtieth. The contract says the completion has to be done completely by May thirty-first. So um that would be fine. I would just say that there's gonna be a significant number of people at an event in this location on May thirtieth, which is probably gonna be crazier than ever. Um so if we're truly looking at it from a safety perspective, it would be good to have, do what we can to have it in place by that point in time. Cause I, I envision that'll be one of the peak times where there's the most number of people in that space because it's a planned event as opposed to organically people showing up. But, so yeah, you could wait, um but there would be.
You answered my question.
Be less likely that defense would be installed. I, I don't know that. Brian would be able to better answer that question.
Yeah, okay.
We have a motion to bring it to the council and then if that, on Monday night, if they decide to hold that vote until May sixth, they can do that.
I think, I think even though we should still, I mean, because technically you've got two hundred and nineteen thousand in that fund and if you're two oh five short, you've actually only really got fifteen thousand in there. So we don't have, we don't really have a contingency of two hundred and nineteen. So I, you know, from, from a hard number point of view, you know, that's how we, that's, those, that's a reality.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we need to be cogni-, I, I don't disagree on a safety aspect. I just think we need to look at how we're gonna fund it. You know, because if we take it out of that pocket, we've gotta put some money back in from somewhere else.
Well, and we have the expectation that that other three hundred and seventy-nine, we haven't collected that either, but we do trust that will come in.
Yeah.
Um we've had very good experience in Fergus Falls with people, you know, paying their pledges and, I mean, we, Fergus Falls is very good about that as a community. So, you know, just.
Yeah.
We don't have the three seventy-nine in either, but we do expect that to come.
All right, so there's a motion to bring this to the council?
I do know that there's one, one donor out there that, that they are working on right now that made a commitment, but he doesn't remember doing it, but uh it, it will come through. So I, I know there's one big donor out there right now.
I think that's been all resolved now, so.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Jim? All right, so there's a motion to bring this to the council on Monday night with option one. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. Uh next item for discussion is the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources State Park Road Account Program, Public Improvement three, uh five three seven six, and again, Andrew Bremseth.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. Couple uh items here forthcoming that are good news, so that's always fun. Maybe I'll earn that title back, Assistant City Engineer, it has a good ring to it. But uh in all honesty, we uh received word that we received a grant from the uh DNR State Park Road Account. Um if you recall, last October, the council authorized uh staff to submit this grant application. There was four million dollars statewide. Um and these funds can be used to improve, improve local access roads to state parks, state campgrounds, public water access and other eligible recreation areas. Uh we did apply for the access road to D Lagoon Park. Couple of criteria, it has the regional um park status, but also um the public water access, making that an eligible project. So um we applied for uh two hundred and ten thousand dollars and we received two hundred and nine thousand forty-nine dollars. So over ninety-nine percent of the project request was funded, so that's always uh nice to see. Um Brian mentioned that he anticipates starting this work in the summer of twenty twenty-five after the uh D Lagoon project, the campground improvements and ballfield work are complete. There is a map on the screen. The yellow section, which is, you know, the entrance road in and the half of that loop, is the funding from this grant opportunity. The red was already complete back in twenty twenty-one. That included the little blue circle there at the access. And then that kind of aqua or teal colored blue, uh which makes up the remainder of the loop, will have to be funded elsewhere. And um that's about eighty thousand dollars is what Brian's anticipating the cost would be. And we're uh contemplating using funds um out of our parking rec budget and/or the annual mill and overlay funds. Part of our street budget to, to finish the remainder of that loop. And again, that would be um either in conjunction with or after this project. So we wouldn't be looking at this year, we'd be looking at twenty twenty-five. So a little bit of time to, to plan where that eighty thousand comes from. But that will then complete um the entirety of the road system at D Lagoon Park. So that's really a positive thing. The proposed improvements in the yellow section there consist of full depth, the tubuminous patching as needed and then resurfacing throughout the entirety of that area. So at this point, um with the council's blessing on Monday, we would initiate public improvement number five three seven six, which is the D Lagoon Park Access Road Improvement Project. And then we'd authorize uh city staff to accept the State Park Road Account offer in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand forty-nine dollars.
And we can bring that to the council through a motion? Thank you. Brent? Thanks, Jim. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Uh item number six is Furin-Fryberg Roundabout Improvement Project, Public Improvement five three six two.
Yeah, thank you, your honor, members. Um this is pertaining to the roundabout on Furin-Fryberg Avenue in partnership with Ottertail County. You all authorized us to uh go forward with a grant application to cover the city's share of that project uh from the LRIP, which is a local road improvement program uh grant opportunity through MINDOT. Previously, the council approved this. I think it was the only time with this council the mayors had to vote. So obviously, a, a little bit of a split issue, but uh at that time, the thought was the money would come from um, you know, sort of state aid. Because of this grant opportunity, the grant covers that cost and the funding won't come out of our state aid account, which will allow that to be spent elsewhere. So really kind of good news. We were, we uh received seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars uh as part of this grant application. It's estimated that the city's cost portion is approximately seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus any non-eligible municipal storm work, which is determined uh through that state aid review process. So we anticipate we'll probably spend the entirety of that seven hundred and ninety thousand um that was received through this grant. So uh with the council's blessing, we will authorize uh Brian to accept the LRIP grant offer and work through that process with MINDOT. And uh again, I don't know the timing today on that roundabout, but I know that this uh will cover the bulk, if not all, of the city's cost portion of that roundabout. So um it talks about in your packet what the city's responsibility is. One-third of the cost of the street repair sidewalk and lighting included in the resurfaced area of the roundabout. One hundred percent of the cost of the non-storm sewer municipal utilities. One-third of the cost of storm sewer placement based on MINDOT stormwater analysis. One hundred percent of costs for permanent or temporary easements adjoining Fryberg Avenue. And then appropriate a portion of engineering um in an amount representing the same ratio to the total engineering costs as the municipality's portion of the construction. So if you have specific questions about that, I will defer to Brian, but ultimately, the grant amounts, the intent is to cover those costs. So really, really, I think good news this morning and, and it should be well received.
Thank you, Andrew. And we can accept that through the council with a motion from this committee? Thank you, Laura. Thanks.
I'll second.
Scott? Questions for Andrew? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. I think there's, thank you, Andrew. I think there's one other item that um Scott, Jim wanted to bring up in regards to reconsidering the open forum policy and the televised.
I would like to bring up the, the open forum policy. I completely agree with the policy as is, but I think it should be on TV. I think people out there should get a chance to see and hear what people are saying. So uh I would like to bring that back up to the council.
Sure.
And uh re-vote on that part of it. The, the policy itself as it is, is fine. I would just like to see it on TV.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, so we could, I'm just thinking here. If the council, if this body wanted to take action, we could, we could, not saying we have to, but we could um eliminate any changes in that by taking action this morning so it's televised on Monday night?
I, I think we should discuss it Monday night.
Okay, so that's fine. So Monday night, there's a motion to reconsider, if someone like to second that?
I'll second that.
Second that, okay? Any questions, comments?
Can we just clarify that on Monday, we will be having a five fifteen? And if, we're gonna be going with what you moved, the latest council?
Yep. Yep. Sounds good. Scott?
Uh just to further clarify, as Jim was saying, I think that our intention, those who voted for this when we passed it last, at our last meeting, the main piece of it was moving it outside of our business meeting to the time before. That was the significant deciding factor in my case. And I think that moving it or adjusting it so that it now allows for televising it, I think is it a reasonable and appropriate move to do? And I think that I would support that.
Thank you, Scott. Any other questions, council? We'll bring this up for consideration on Monday night. I guess there's a motion to do that on Monday night. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The motion carries. If there's not anything else to come before this committee, we'll, we are adjourned.